Looks like we're six o'clock. So, we're gonna call the students to work. Um, they have roll call, everybody's here, but we have two additions today. This is our student representatives on the school board, I say something wrong, it's a perjury, correct me. This is actually Tom and Jacob Burke. They are here to just kinda help us. Uh, if we have questions and things, there's somebody representing the students of the school. So, anything else we need to add?
Can we just make sure that everyone's of clear understanding, they are not voting members. Voting members, not voting, they're elected or appointed through a process, so they are, they are not voting members. It will be wonderful to have every participant.
I guess it goes back to some conferences I would like to. A lot of times we struggle because we don't have an opinion from people your age or people in the system. And so, as important, we just kinda struggled with that. We solved it. So, hopefully we're good. Okay, additions to the agenda, we have just a couple of additions. Um, and, um, so, you'll see them on the second, uh, addition sheet. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Oh.
A motion from Rick.
A second.
A second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carrie. Um, public comment. Anybody here for public comment?
I have no request.
Okay. And then, we have a consent agenda. And, um, so, we have the minutes of the December 18th, 2019 meeting, and that, everybody had access to this, I'm assuming if they got a chance to look at it. We have the minutes of the January 7th, 2019 meeting, we have the minutes of the January 10th, 2019 meeting. Um, we do have the treasures report, um, in there, um, bills, and personal items. Then, I believe there is an addition on the, the second one. So, in the consent agenda, we're also gonna add, um, let's see, I'm gonna back up here a little bit. So, we have a hire, a revised assignment for personal items, and then, on the agenda, we have another personal item, it looks like, uh, is that a hire or just a different hours?
Yep. So, we have two hires. David Schubacher, accepted and started as a custodial position, which is wonderful. We, we were actually contemplating temp service, you know, to fill that, and we have used temp service, so that's wonderful. Uh, the revised assignments for Jill Obansky, she's a professional at the elementary school, 15 hours a day, is what is being done, and for all percent of the other courses and the other areas. Uh, the time that she started, there was some, some other issues that prevented her from working at full parishship. Um, and then, the last one is a fitness center employee that is a new contractor, Jim Becker. Those are the three personal workers.
Okay, so, that's the consent agenda. Um, we do have the bills there, do you have something you wanna add here?
Uh, I had just to go and look at the bills, and everything about the business is normal. Um, and noticed that our Carrie Weller is now communitizing with us, and, um, and just the therapy check was in there. And, um, large order for meter space supplies, so that's ongoing, still building. And the financial payment for the scoreboards, excuse me. But then that, it was pretty much, at least as a month, and things have been approved.
Okay. Um, so, the two ways we can do this, we got, if we undertake a motion, we can have discussion if you have other questions, if that works. So, undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
A motion from Thomas. The second for me. So, um, any other discussion? Is that okay if we do it this way? And we're gonna have discussions, you know, by that. Jared, I don't think you have further questions on gas, but then, fair enough, yeah? Okay. Any other discussion? I have no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carrie. Okay, communication items, we are with our superintendent.
Alright, so, just, I just want to update the board on a couple things. You'll notice the, uh, the agenda does look slightly different, uh, now with the new model. Um, so, on the second meeting of the month, the only communication item you would have is administrative report delivered by me. Uh, at the work and learn sessions, that'll be the first meeting of the month, you will get communication items from all the other administrative members, um, but that will happen, and at those work and learns, give a little bit more flexibility as far as when those people can get in and how to do a lot of their assignments and so on. So, typically, second meeting of the month, the only report you can get is mine, and then, the first meeting of the month, you can hear from everyone else. Alright? Um, just a couple of updates. First one is YST grant. You might remember this from back in November. We talked about submitting a, a YST for youth apprenticeship program. Uh, the grant was submitted to the Department of Labor, it was a partnership between London Spicer, BBE, and Amesville Schools in conjunction with St. Cloud State University. Uh, bad news is, we were not selected as a project or funded for that YST grant. We were fined for under $1,000. We've given our youth apprenticeship program off and running. Uh, we did not get selected as a grant recipient. Uh, so, now, we're moving on to plan B. Uh, plan B is to leverage $100,000 in a different way, and that would include both, uh, BBE schools and London Spicer schools submitting for a lift grant. Uh, neither one of them have a lift grant. Amesville right now does, we are the recipient of a lift grant for our CNA program, and so, that disqualifies us from applying for another one. So, um, we are regrouping, and we're going to resubmit, uh, these two other grants, again, with the goal of raising $100,000 in order to, um, start an apprenticeship program. It's, it's what the goal was.
As that moves forward, and, um, as I learn more information about that process in time along, I will walk through the board, um, as we go.
I thought that was for the CNA program, what apprenticeship program is that for?
Uh, it's an apprenticeship program that we don't have right now. So, the goal was between the three districts to be able to gain this $100,000 through the Department of Labor in order to start an apprenticeship program.
And nothing specific is needed for apprenticeship, Ken?
Well, the, the goal was to have, we had about four or five business partners onboard to be able to have work placements and apprenticeships in, in place. Um, unfortunately, the funding, we gotta come up with funding mechanisms, so, we're heading back to the drawing board. But, not all hope needs to be lost. Okay?
Yep.
Um, second of all, semester two started today. It was, it's hard to believe, it was the first day of semester two, but, uh, we're here. It's cold enough outside to be the first day of semester two, that's for sure. Um, obviously, that's budget season, planning season, so, we are in the midst of, of getting things, uh, one foot in this year, one foot to next year, and, uh, the board's gonna begin that work very soon as well. Yesterday, uh, was quarter break day, um, a lot of the things that we had going on is, we had some companies come out to give us a overview of their student information system. Uh, right now, we are with JMC, and, uh, we have been for a while, JMC has some limitations, and so, we are exploring the possibility of looking for a different student information system. Um, I don't think there's any, uh, decision or meeting that's, that's gonna be ready here in the next, um, month or so, but we are moving forward with, with looking at that and seeing if we potentially would be, um, looking at something, something different. The last thing I have, and Cheryl did mention this, but with the turn of the, uh, calendar to 2019, our shared business manager has been working, um, now Mondays and Wednesdays at, uh, in the district office, Carrie Weller, who was the business manager over at BBE, um, will eventually be the business manager for both BBE and Amesville as Jill retires, and she has begun work, um, in, in Amesville and is, is getting accustomed to kind of how things are and the differences between the two districts and stuff, so, um, we are moving forward with that, and, um, you will, we'll see Carrie very shortly as we continue to recruit, um, as we process this.
Questions from you?
Um, Carrie is currently working two days a week here?
Correct.
Will that continue two days here, two days over, or?
Uh, well, um, you know, right now, I believe, uh, until June 30th, what is in the contract is two days a week, and then, the plan is to go two and a half and two and a half. Um, you know, I'm, I think a lot of it's going to be as work, uh, as the workload mounts. Uh, obviously, in preparation of the bills and everything associated with this meeting tonight, uh, the week prior to this meeting may require her to be here three days a week. Uh, so, there will be some fluidity to it, but up until June 30th, it's two days a week. Once, uh, June 30th rolls around and we enter the new fiscal year, then it's gonna be at least two and a half. Um, but again, that may mean some weeks it's three, and some weeks it's two, and, and there'll be some kind of influence there.
Other questions? That's what I got. No more questions, we'll go to committee reports. Um, we'll first start with policy committee. So, just a heads up, so, we got two people sitting here, obviously, on the policy committee. Somebody wants to just give us a summary of both that?
I think the summary is that we're gonna deal with it later in the agenda.
Yeah.
You're right on. The policy committee can go ahead and give a summary, and then, we're gonna repeat the summary and go ahead, and, and we have some recommendations.
Okay, so?
New business or old business?
New business.
Okay. Then, let's go to schools for equity.
Okay.
And education.
Uh, we met a week ago down in the cities. A couple of, of presentations, the first was from an organization, it's informational hall, a, from an organization about education lobbying, I never heard of it before. Um, but their group is lobbying and doing some other things, uh, to, their mission is to advance student-centered learning. And, um, their emphasis is that student achievements can vary from student to student and from school to school, and, yeah, we're stuck with MCAs that judge everywhere the same, and so, one of the things that they're looking at is MCAs versus local assessments. Uh, this is what we keep hearing from a number of organizations, we get a lot of mandates from the state, and, uh, at what point do we say, you know, local schools know what's best for our students, uh, but the state says. So, they're lobbying group that's looking, they'd like to see more flexibility given to schools in these areas. So, that was more of an informational report. We also heard from Senator Nelson, who's chair of the Senate B-12 Finance and Policy Committee, and from Representative Davity, who is the Chair of the House Education Finance Committee, and they just kinda gave us an update, uh, where they see things going, it's kinda hard, because they just, they were the first weekend we knew about them. And, uh, they said there's a couple things that are priorities, they think, down there, one is mental health issues with the schools, school safety, special education, always. Um, question was asked, how do they think the session's gonna go? They said a key will be to watch the early days of the session, see if they're getting done. If they can get some of the new things passed, some, um, stand-alone bills passed, and start moving things along, maybe it'll be good, maybe all the good, more feelings revealing from them to start the session will translate itself. If nothing happens after week, after week, after week, we might end up with what we got last year, so, um, let's just keep our eyes open and, uh, one thing concerns me, if they get the marijuana passed right away and through, and then they don't do the other education, there's something really wrong with the state, that we can get single issues like that passed, but we can't deal with education. So, hopefully, we see some movement with education this year, we see it not leading to the end. Um, so, Jacob's been real involved with all that legislative stuff too, so I don't know how he sees things.
Uh, we took some time, Thursday, uh, Superintendent Boller nine, with, um, Representative, please say, with our newly-elected state representative, had a really nice visit with her, uh, had a visit with, um, Senator Howe, and that was also, we did, I think, we got some newly-elected representatives that are really willing to listen, uh, and then, I had a chance, uh, to visit with Representative Hamilton, former Chair of the Ag, and who follows, follows education very closely. Um, and in some of the discussions I had after that, um, the Senate majority is so slim for, on the GOP side, that they're gonna have to work very, very closely with the Democrats, uh, and, uh, it's actually been pretty hopeful to see the Chair, Carla Nelson and Jim Davity have been working really well together, so this is something that's pretty rare, so hopefully, this kumbaya moment can last just a little bit longer, so we can get some, something substantial done, and then, the Star Tribune on Sunday had an article about, uh, the special education funding and how, you know, all these unfunded mandates are problems for districts, and, um, I'm a little worried about that. You know, the legislature doesn't always wanna have these big fixes, they don't always wanna mire into this deep problem solving, they might try to find a Band-Aid solution for this, and that really worries me, but I think now that the media, uh, and people are paying a little bit more attention to this, maybe something will happen on this, and that's my great hope for this special education funding. Uh, it's, it's, it's really hard on our districts, and I actually did make some copies of that article for board members, so after the meeting, I'll distribute them, so.
I think the other positive too is that, this is not from CME, but from the convention last week, it was the governor and the Commissioner of Education both showed up, they're both former teachers, I think she was special education, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, that's another hopeful sign for, for, for some people applying for education out there. There's another CME coming up, and then, also, on March 20th, uh, we're invited down to Capitol, so I'll be heading down to Capitol on March 20th. Anybody else wants to go, from the community, from staff, from the school board, it'd be great to have 10 people or more from our, our district, it'll be about six or seven different schools that are invited that one day to go down there and, you know, talk to some of the legislators, and, you know, review where things are standing at that point in time.
Okay, any other questions for Rick? Okay, then, let's go number three, MSBA Leadership Conference. Um, I guess what I've got this on here for, just give a quick summary, um, maybe I'll just start, is that okay? So, we're at the MSBA Leadership Conference, the public paid for us to, to go down there, and anyway, um, personally, I kinda concentrated a little more on meetings for share ship and some of that kind of stuff, to make sure I had lots afterward, I had done this work a couple years, so, we followed that through, went to some other meetings that were based upon some of the new methods of education, and some of the shifting, some of which we kinda have going on here already, but they talked about it there. So, um, and then, they have a big, um, kind of show floor, you can talk to vendors and people with questions on everything, um, it was very, very good, and I've got a fantastic speaker, I mean, so, could we start with you, Thomas Young? We'll just go down, um, yeah, just say a few words.
Yeah, certainly, like, uh, you know, first-year board member, we had the opportunity to invite myself and Jake and Benny, and he was the phase one, two training earlier actually, but, uh, we took our phase one, two training there, as well, uh, Tuesday evening and, and Wednesday, everything, and then, you know, at State Foundation Conference the rest of the time, and it was, it was a really energizing time for me. Um, kinda coming to this school board, kinda, you know, a little nervous about what's, this is all about, how it all works, and, and being able to be around the first and a half around the new school board members as well, and communicate with them and talk with them about, you know, why they decided on the first school board, and then, what drove them to this point. Um, that was, you know, kinda nice and energetic for me, then, then, yeah, the leadership conference, you know, we don't walk around the show floor, I've been to a lot of conferences and trade shows and different things, do, do, you know, personal business, so, you know, kinda having some of that knowledge, you know, walk around the, the trade show floor, uh, sit in some roundtable discussions, uh, I went to Minnesota State High School League Conference, and, and kinda hit some of those areas that I really feel passionate about within the school district as well, so, it, like you said, for me, I, you know, it was energizing, it was kind of an opportunity for me to really get a good feel for, you know, things that we're gonna look forward to in the future.
Um, well, I, you know, I attended a couple of sessions on booster clubs and special groups like the FFA alumni, and how they support the school, and we've learned some things about that, that, that whole, um, area. Uh, I went to another session on, from Cleveland School District, Cleveland, Minnesota, uh, on a building project that they put together and, and got passed, um, all that, very interesting. Um, I was enthralled by the speaker that we had, well, eight days, I didn't know if someone got down there, I'd read his book already, and actually had his eight pillars on my bulletin board at work. Um, one suggestion I will make is that, I think it might be, you know, the whole thing was trust, and I think that's something we need to work on as a school board, because let's face it, there have been some trust issues in the past. And as we move forward, uh, we need to keep building trust with the community, and the suggestion I've been making, do what you want with it, but I think maybe every month, we should take one of those pillars and spend 10 minutes talking about, you know, what's clarity, how are we, are we doing a good job, and be clear of clarity, and what could we do more to be building that pillar in our community, and maybe every month, take one of those pillars and talk a little, just a little bit about it, and talk about what we are doing, what we could be doing there, to continue to build trust, because we need to do that if we're gonna go ahead with, um, getting the framework.
Um, yeah, I attended a first-year board member training, but there's a fairly steep learning curve, and so, there was a lot of learning going on there. It was a long session, but there was a lot of learning, valuable things for us to learn, really benefited, uh, from that, and, uh, the leadership convention. I think the thing that I enjoyed the most was networking with these vendors and other board members, and gaining different perspectives from these organizations that could maybe be helpful us or helpful for me, and that speaker was absolutely fantastic. Usually, I tend to get bored or fidgety during these motivational speakers, and this man, just he, he enthralled me, and was just so entertaining and, uh, motivational, as it were, which makes sense. Um, it's just really good, and I think we learned a lot from his pillars, I mean, I think that would, I would agree that I think talking about that once a month really benefited our board, and just, is a really, uh, wonderful opportunity, and I learned quite a bit from this, so.
Um, similar experience, uh, phase one, phase two training was a lot of information, um, understanding budgets, a lot of these policies, um, so, it was a lot of information taken in. Um, the next days were very energizing, because we had the opportunity to really go to some of the sessions that, that we were interested in, and I love analytics, so I chose, um, you know, looking at dashboards, how we get achievement gaps, how can you analyze that differently, um, just different situations like that, and I also spent time, uh, going to sessions on schools that have post-gas on referendums, to just hear what they're doing, what they're thinking, and it was energizing, because the momentum and the way that we are moving is very similar to whatever schools are doing, and so, it was really affirming to hear that, to see that, and then, be able to ask questions and pick your brain, and how did you do this, and what did you do, and, um, did that work, and asking for now, what, what are the outcomes, what are you seeing in the difference, um, in the decisions you've made. Um, another big thing is like what Rick was saying, a common theme was communication is key in community involvement. We heard over and over and over again, when things are going really well with the school, it involves hundreds, hundreds of conversations with community members, listening, um, and just being really active, involved, and transparent, um, and so, it's, it's, it's funny to me, it sounds like we're in a trap, this feels really good. I think our board is completely invested, it was really fun to get to know, um, everyone a little bit better, and I feel we're all very mission-focused, the students, the school students, and what can we do, um, to make things move in, continue to move in the right direction, so, it was, it was great, but tiring, it was tiring.
Cheryl?
Um, we've been at the conference several times, so, I kind of went to some refreshers, um, open mini law and, um, athletics, and, but I also hit some, um, like, board numbers guided to special education and supporting social emotional learning of elementary students. Rick and I ended up in a couple of the same ones, but I didn't run into very many other members in the meetings I went to, so that was, I thought that was great, because we spread out, we did, uh, did a collaboration. Yeah, it is a very, very intense, um, two days down there, for us, it's two days, Thursday and Friday, um, we sometimes go to the Wednesday evening, early birds, but there really wasn't anything in those two that were out there that were interesting, so I didn't go to those. But, uh, we went down Wednesday night, and Thursday morning, it starts at 7:30 with registration, 8 o'clock, you're in your first meeting, and it goes on all the way till 5 o'clock, we get to talk to the governor, um, and the meetings aren't just, you get to choose from two or three. Um, the, the meetings, you get choice of one, one meeting out of 27 for each of the sessions that you go to, and they, they're all different each time. And same with the roundtables, um, first roundtable is two out of 12 you get to choose, and the second roundtable is three out of 13. So, you have to pick and choose which you'll learn, and which one, and I thought it was great that we didn't run into each other much, so it was pretty well spread out. Um, David Horsiger was great, and we had heard him once before, years back at the conference, and I realized after I saw him, I have the book also, but he is wonderful. And seeing the governor and hearing him talk was just great, I really enjoyed that, and I picked up a lot more information, I'll be sharing a lot here in the next month or two.
Okay, that pretty much, uh, covers most of that. Um, then, let's go to old business, and we have district goals there.
We are, we're gonna talk about strategic climate, so?
That was not, in a kind of, uh, really, that kind of do, yeah, we went to school that night.
We can go forward to new business.
Okay. So, um, FFA alumni plot update, uh, we have, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah. It was pretty good this year, prices weren't very normal, but, uh, we didn't have the waters open, and we paid for electric for use of the well, and then, we got a light on the pot, A site, and we used it A for that. So, we got figured out how much it costs for run, and that's how we figured what we paid for electric, you know, we gotta figure out how many, uh, uh, much electric we use, so, and usually, we give this check a little over there, but we had relations, so, uh, we apologize for that, and we, I, we will pay this check, so. Any questions? I have one. Yeah, just a curious question. So, we did the plots, and we have corn and beans, and, uh, out there, but when I listen to the agriculture right now, there's one common thing, there's no money in corn and beans. So, do, do we maybe sometime look at maybe planting something else that, you know what I mean, you guys know that business and?
Right.
But I just wanna throw that out there, I mean, do we dedicate them into planting something that everybody's run around for the last four, five years, some of it's no money in it?
Yeah. Uh, we've been looking into that, the trouble is to get enough heat winter to, to fill the pot.
Gotcha.
You know, uh, with the corn, I, I ain't on the pot too many, we're filling in here, so, you gotta bear with us a little bit. You know, it means we got, I believe, 15, 16 varieties out there, so, we also are, uh, how should I say it, don't have a whole lot of room either, once you get 16, you gotta put them in a couple times so you get a, a true test, uh, but, yeah, we were talking about that, and we're offering suggestions.
Yeah, I was kinda curious about it.
We've had very good luck with people who take, like, the corn, they don't dock us for the moisture, you know, they dock us for the shrink, but they don't charge us to dry their corn, so, we do make a little bit of money, but we were just used to the big bucks here a couple years ago, and we gotta just change.
You know, food for thought, it's just that, can I just look at it?
Yeah.
There's one thing that I mean, maybe the kids can allow, it's, it's?
We still make pretty good money, but I mean, we were, didn't make like we usually did, you know, when we were down on, you know, but then, we do, we do charge for people to bring their seed in, you know, so we do make, we, it's great, we, you know, because I'm gonna keep getting the help, and then, a lot of the equipment is, is, uh, given to us to use, or a couple of the alumni members do the work, so, uh, we don't have a real big expense to it, but.
Yeah, and some of my thought was maybe more industry, not our pot-specific, just, if the kids are getting a, a feel of planting corn and beans, should be, plant something else, that kinda, maybe they're gonna be 25 years old, and the industry could have planted something else, 'cause there's, uh, another sale there for that industry.
You got any suggestions?
No, I don't, I was, I was throwing, I was having a meeting, this would be good. I was throwing it out to you, just, that's all. You guys come from that industry, and I know in some of your magazines and stuff, they'll be talking about it, what we should do, because you have the same issue we have, we have a bunch of youth that are gonna grow into that, we want them to be able to grow into it, but, just food for thought, I just, we don't.
Well, as the alumni, we put on a career meeting, I know, he's got your own, no, you were that, and there we like to touch on different, not just, you know, and A revolves around a bunch of things, it just don't revolve around sort of the corn and beans and, and harvesting, so, and we had a, this will be our third year we're doing it, and last year was, I think, the last one. I, we got, uh, these guys did get a survey on it, and we got good feedback, alright.
Doing a good job, we got a lot of stuff going. Again, we're trying to, I think as a whole, we're trying to think out the box for the kids, and that was the only reason.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what, we're doing this for fundraising, because this was, you know, they're doing it, so we're trying to find different things to do. I think we're gonna try to have a hot rose, or a hot tea, and we'll deal with, so hopefully we can raise more money for the kids.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
I have another question, but.
Yeah.
Caroline went to some seminars, it was beautiful, he sent us to the state's Cooper Department. I believe it's a, it's a state statute that we have to, the board officially accept the donation by a two-thirds vote.
Yes, you were talking about that.
That's what the motion on the agenda was.
Oh, it is there, okay, there's the whole thing, so.
Thank you very much for, for being, we appreciate your help. How does the budget come out? 386 dollars.
So.
I think most of them. I'll send you that.
Okay, is there further discussion?
I just want to bring your attention to what checks here might be more, you know, that's how it fluctuates the amount of water we use, like, trees.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no? Carry it. Okay, thank you. Sure.
We also have a pot day in September, and I'm just giving you a notice that you're on the right to come to that.
Thank you.
And if you give me information as we get closer, I will remind them to.
Yeah, okay. We don't have to see you around.
Thank you. I hope to be around.
Okay, so, um, who does this level, the Educational Networks website contract?
Uh, this was a contract that you guys already have reviewed in December, November, maybe? It was November, I was supposed to have it on December perhaps, and I omitted it, so. Educational Networks is the company that we would like to use as a web host. They would actually begin developing our new website and incorporate the new layout and content of it. Matt Dickhausen and I, I participated in a couple interviews with them, and we actually talked about three or four different web hosts. This is the one that I think, when you take the perspective of meeting our needs, but also providing value for contract amount and everything, this is the one that we are recommending.
Everybody kind of, just, because this is one that kind of carried from board to board, so everybody's, that's. Okay. So we have the information, we have a great day, we could entertain a motion, oh, some sort of.
And we approve contract for services with the Educational Networks website.
And we have a second, so we have a motion, I think, from a second by Maggie. Any further discussion?
That's for this race year.
Does our approval include the, um, the app as well? Okay, the edit function should have us.
Is it integrated with the JMC stuff, or?
It's as integrated as JMC will allow anything to integrate. That is also just one of our, our issues when we talk about student information systems. One of JMC's limitations is syncing and talking to other systems, and so that's, that's a piece of why we're looking at maybe potentially some alternatives. So as much as it can sync it as well, the good thing is, as far as activity calendars and those things, those, those places on our website that get the most traffic, this will be a much more user-friendly system than what we presently have in place.
And I'll just add, I'm at Task Force, where I work, moving to different platforms, and this is a pretty comprehensive system, and I was shocked at the sticker price is really low. I was expecting it to be a lot more, more getting, and, I mean, you don't have to have HTML skills, which is terrible, because it sounds like our team's will be able to make changes quickly, and there's some things that we'll have to go for service for with them, but I, I was impressed with the, the contract.
One of those, you remember for the first time, we had some other quotes, and I think there were 10 men plus.
Yeah, they range, I mean, there, there were outfits out there that I think would go about as low as 3,000 or so, and you could go as high as 20 per year if, if you want, so. That's what I said, when you look at value as far as the cost of the product and what it can deliver for us, that's, that's how magnetic ever I get, ever hunted in this one.
As you students, are you excited for something a little bit better than what we have? I mean, it's maybe not fantastic what we have now, but I'm sure something user-friendly that we can, I'm sure you guys are.
Well, I, I mean, I know, I have no problem with the site we have now. Obviously, I don't use it a lot, like, community members might be using it for, you know, the meeting, agenda minutes and stuff like that, so I really don't see any problem with it while we have now, but if you guys think it's a good, good move, then that's what's gonna be, so.
I mean, I kind of agree that, I don't use it that much, but I do think there's a lot of like, what, that you have to, so what you want, like, because sometimes I do just want to, like, be athletic schedule, just be like, oh, we play tonight, and then sometimes I have to sit there and be like, okay, I have to go here, and I have to go here, and here, and then it's just kind of.
It's not necessarily user-friendly all the time, is it?
So with the new one now, if you go through it, will that help, you know, like, the process of getting to somewhere, something, or what's?
So, yeah, so I, I browse through all their example websites, not all, but a dozen, half a dozen, whatever, their example websites, and it's just like, we do a, you know, a top-line website, even for a lot of other.
The only issue is, is most people are accessing a website with one of these now, and so the integrated app is actually probably going to be what most people will use that, and it will be optimized to be used on the handheld device. Right now, our website just simply doesn't, you take what comes up on your handheld device, and it doesn't look anything like what our actual desktop is, and buttons are every which way, and you have to go searching and look for, trying to add money to a large topic, and all of this.
I see the information that you need in, in context, whereas community members that are going, you know, is there a basketball game tonight, and what time is it? Oh my God, you're trying to find that stuff? Yeah, this is just looking at some basic layouts, it's nicer to the eyes, it's okay, I can follow it, nice stuff.
Well, we also.
Were we going to have a single administrator, or were you?
Well, so that's one of the features with this, so Matt Dickhausen has still been very much been responsible for the website. I do think that we are getting to an age where it is time to actually turn some of that over to our students. There's some coursework and stuff that we are gonna be hopefully introducing next year, where we will not only expand some of our broadcasting capabilities, but some other mass media and PR activities will, will be taken into account as well, so there's gonna be that component. The other piece is, that's, that's also gonna be a part of this, is it may be referenced that you don't need to be a programmer to be able to use and, um, app data, take, you know, remove data, be a publisher, and so that's gonna also be an expectation on our employees. There will be employees that will have sites that the expectation will be, there will be a baseline of what will be out there on the website. So ultimately, Matt will be our website person responsible for it, but you're gonna find that there's gonna be a bunch of other employees as well that are gonna be up to speed with how it moves, and, and that's really the key to a website. If you have one person who's doing it all, one, it becomes a full-time job, and then two, your website becomes so outdated because somebody hasn't had something, and then the content never changes. And people learn that very quickly, and they just say, it's not worth going to the website because it's not up to date information.
It doesn't look, you know, we, I won't say which one, but there's a spot, one website down there, the website, that hasn't been updated for four years, and a neighborhood school has the same website and it's up to date all the time, and when you look at any website and you look at something that hasn't been updated for four years, doesn't leave a good feel, because they don't care as what you get.
For example, if we're looking at a project, and all the previous stuff on the project is in one place, and this stuff's somewhere else. So it just makes sense, we talked about it originally when this came on, is it was a lot of the information that we post and all of that expecting everybody to see it, it's truly a complicated website to get into and find your way around, and in comparison to most, just like you found Thomas, and probably everybody else did, and they look, so. I know it's a pledge to get this going here, but based upon, um, that recommendation of where we should go, it seemed like the best route to go. One thing I have followed is, if you guys are younger like you are, you can't fault Maggie Jenny. Start getting a little older, it doesn't always.
Be more obvious. That was girl, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, I think the other thing too is that, I think I mentioned last week, is that if somebody's thinking of moving to the area and they're looking at schools, the first place they're gonna look is the website. Maybe I wouldn't, but the other thing, as we know, if you're going to a restaurant, you look at the websites, a restaurant, if you're looking at schools, you look at the website, and the website is, is not up to date, and wherever the school is, it's got all the information out, we need to keep that up to date.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second, any further discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Carry it. Okay, next we have the first policy reading of five different policies. Policy 407, employee right to know, exposure to hazardous substances. Now, do you want to add them as the kind of a one-by-one, or how do you want to?
Well, I can just review all of them.
Okay.
So policy 407 is employee right to know, there are no changes to this policy, and policy was last reviewed in June 2018, so there, there are no updates or changes. Policy 408 is subpoena of employee, of school district employees, again, there's no changes to this policy, that policy was also reviewed in the spring of 2018 on May 8. Policy 410 is Employee Family Medical Leave Act, or Medical Leave Policy, which is in alignment with that act. There are significant changes to this, it needs to be brought into alignment with state and federal statute. A new definition of spouse is a big one. Minnesota used to have a 12-week, or a six-week leave option under state law, now that is just simply a 12-week, or 12-week that is in accordance with federal law. There's also the addition of 26-week leave option for military family service members, and then we would remove the previous piece that was in there on the six-week leave. The policy that is actually included on the link on the agenda, that would be the new wording to the newly recommended policy that will be coming back to this board for a second reading for policy 410. So essentially, what, what we are suggesting, what the policy committee is suggesting, put policy 410, is to get us in alignment with current state and federal statute. Policy 412, expense reimbursement, there's no changes to that policy. And when I say there's no changes, the policy is reviewed and will have a new review date, but there have not been any changes at the state or federal level that offer guidance to that policy, so MSBA has not offered any suggested changes since this policy was last reviewed in 2013, and so there are very few recommendations for any changes on that.
This is very tough, yeah.
The last one is the harassment and violence. This is one, again, that we need to update the definition of gender and sexual identification in order to be compliant and run parallel to the Minnesota Human Rights Act. That definition needs to be updated throughout. And then this policy, I believe, had an individual named as the person that would be the fielder of any harassment or violence complaint. Anytime you put a name down, it becomes very difficult, turnover happened, and so you just name the superintendent, and then that would be able to stay in policy if there were personnel changes. So those are the five policies. I don't know if the policy committee members have anything to add to those, but I think they're pretty straightforward.
Well, they sat down, are viewable, so.
So the recommendation then would be to approve these as first reading, that would take a motion a second and a majority vote, and then the policies would be posted in their intended form for second reading, and they'd be available in the district office if anybody wanted to request them or has concerns or comments about them.
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of policy 407, 408, 410, 412, and 413, have to present that.
Motion from Maggie?
Sorry.
Or a second from Thomas? Any further discussion?
I don't know what the new definition of spouse is. It just piqued my curiosity. It's probably just changed, leaving embarrassing, I mean, that is what changed this law. It has been done by law, but I was just wondering what the new definition is.
Spouse means husband or wife. The purpose of this definition, husband or wife refers to the other person whom individual entered into marriage, has to find or recognize, understand, or purposes of marriage in the state in which marriage was entered into, or in the case of marriage entered, entered into outstate, outside of any state, in a marriage's valid, in a place where it entered into, uh, sorry, and could have been entered into at least one state. This definition includes individual in the same sex or common law marriage that either was entered into in a state that recognizes such marriages, or two that entered into outside of any state, is valid in a place where it entered into, and, and could have been entered into in at least one state, so.
Cheryl?
I'm surprised it stuttered more than I did there, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Carry it. Next, we're on budget reduction resolution. And it looks like we need to do a resolution to move forward to work on the budget.
Correct, yeah, so this is, and I don't know if this is an annual resolution, it pains whether or not.
It does seem like it's gonna do.
Uh, most districts, most districts have, this is an annual resolution in January of each year. Basically, what the board is doing is delivering public notice of the intent to review existing programming, future programming, and make any recommendations or changes to that, do budget allocations, so this is how we get started with that. Obviously, there are some statutory guidelines as far as personnel are concerned, and this would be step one in being able to make sure that we honor the process laid out in statute.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I like that, a motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Rick. Do we have a second? I'll second it. And do we have any further discussion?
I have a question, if this was the process that the facilities and equipment committee was part of. Remember those meetings where we went line by line, looking at all of the administrators? Thought they were.
I think this, it basically just, yeah, it appears to be just the resolution for us to get started on it. Is that a decent summary?
Yeah, I'm, I, I cannot speak to the facility and equipment committee, I do not see how that would, would necessarily fit into this, but again, I don't know what role that played.
But I think that will come.
This is, this is essentially getting us in line and providing notice so that we can, if we need to make adjustments to personnel, and some of which personnel have statutory protections in, in line in terms of how the process has been played out. So this is step one of that. If we're talking about facility and equipment and the budget for 1920, the entire board will be briefed on exactly what that budget will look like, and where we will be spending that money and where we will not be spending that money. That will be something that will be coming in the near future.
Okay, and then, just a quick one for you two, you kind of, if you have anything to say on any of these topics, just kind of barging, okay? Okay, so this is a resolution, so I think we can tell them that.
Ashley?
Um, yes, yay, through it.
Jake?
Aye.
Ray, you aye?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Carry it. So the next one is going to be the pay equity report, and, um... And, um, everybody have a summary on that? That's another annual.
Yes, it's not, it's not annual. Um, I forget exactly. It's a three years, five years. Oh, three years. Every three years we're required, um, to go through all of our job classifications. And essentially what they are looking at is making sure that our job classifications, um, have paid away. So, uh, there's a system in which they employ to be able to determine, um, duties, responsibilities, and assign a value to each classification. There's some place in there for being able to look at gender equity. There's also a place in there to be able to look at longevity of employee. And they acknowledge that if they're in the senior base system, as, um, people spend more years in a given position, they will obviously improve some additional wages. But basically it's a checks and balances in order for us to make sure that our classifications are compensated appropriately for their responsibilities. Um, this was conducted by an onsite organization, and they found no, um, issues with the job classifications and how to compensate the classifications that Pinesville schools. Would my recommendation that you approve it as presented?
Do it.
Okay, a motion to approve by Ashley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, without you, Rick? A second, my Rick. Any further discussion? Now, this wasn't a resolution, if I recall.
Correct.
Okay, any other, any further discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? Carried. Now we will go to number F, or number F, uh, facility project.
So just to pick up where we kind of left off, on Thursday, January 10th, the board had a work session. And you had the opportunity to talk with UNESCO and talk about, um, what an owner's representative or a project manager, or whatever other term they use, whichever you prefer. Um, kind of what their services involve, what it looks like, what their business model looks like, and fees and that. Um, the question, I guess, at at this point is, um, you know, what is the wish of the board as we move forward? Um, I can speak from my perspective and my perspective only is I believe we have, uh, the framework of a project that does meet school district needs and addresses community priorities.
And I think we need to move forward on this. You know, we can't allow this to become stagnant. I mean, the momentum is here. For us to keep our wheels stuck in the mud is just, I think, at this point, unacceptable. I think we need to move on this, um, as soon as we can. So I don't know if we need to make a motion to authorize you to move forward on this, or what needs to be done formally for this to happen.
A motion on it, uh, that we operate the administration to move forward, um, work. And, um, then.
So I guess I'm looking for three bits of, of, of direction. Uh, number one, a motion certainly to move forward. Number two, um, there needs to be something that addresses the owner's representative piece. If that's something you want to engage UNESCO in or not, um, that potentially would be a piece. And number three, and I think this is the important thing, and, um, I'm hopeful that people understand that right now we do not have a facility project for our community. We have done a lot of conversation. We've done a lot of talking about what the needs are, what, um, community priorities are, what that could look like. We have provided some estimates of what those costs could be. But at the end of the day, when we're gonna move forward, that's when we need to come up with a comprehensive plan. So I think the other, uh, piece that would be very helpful for the administration to move forward on is that if the board has a feeling of, you know, do not exceed this amount of dollars. I think that's a piece that is, is a piece that's, that's available. The one thing I just want to make sure that people understand is, um, because right now we are talking about a construction estimate that was at seventeen and a half million dollars, that does not in any way lock the district or the community in to a bond issue that is at that value. And there's things out there. There are financing tools. There are tools available to school districts that we actually have a variety of resources to be able to deliver a project in a variety of different ways. And so I just want to make sure that it's clear that what's going on right now is still the conversation and the planning process. There is nothing, nor should it ever be construed at this point, that even if the district moves forward today, that doesn't mean that in May or April or August or November that there will be a bond issue in front of our community for seventeen and a half million dollars. That is just plain false. So the next step is definitely a directive to finalize some planning. It would be great if you would give me direction on UNESCO, and it would be wonderful if you would give me an idea of final plan not to exceed X amount of dollars.
So my opinion on that too, is I don't know that I want to say not to exceed X amount of dollars. Now, the reason I say that is because we're not going to vote. We have no potential to go and vote. We could get any facility company out here, look at our, their school building, their grounds, our, our middle school, high school, our gymnasiums, our elementary school. I'm almost, hang out there is an important thing that we need to look at. Where is that elementary school at? And it's made this like, like where are we at the life span of that building? If we're gonna cap ourselves at, don't exceed twelve million dollars, Matt, well, then that totally wipes off the idea that we're not gonna do any of that elementary school for how long. So knowing that we're not going to vote, I don't personally think that we need to put a cap on it. I think that, that community meetings that we will be attending, that we will be scheduling, will start finding that number. Then we can work with Matt and with whatever company UNESCO or any other companies that move forward with and say, this is where we're at as a community, you know, us as a community. This is where we're going to cap the off. This is what we feel, the community feels is the most important thing. I just don't, I mean, I've been to that elementary school enough times and I've talked to enough people in elementary school. I don't want to say that we are limiting ourselves. And maybe it's part of the, the leak that we had in, in the leadership conference too. It's just talking to the school district, saying, no, this is the idea that we have. We were just gonna put this little gym in. And then we start talking to the community and start realizing that everybody thinks that just a gym is not a right idea. Just spending five million dollars on this gym is not enough. We need to do this. We know long-term facility maintenance plan, uh, if anybody else attended those tech meetings, that we're gonna have some rundown buildings in the next 10 years. And we're gonna go back to the community five years saying, uh, sorry, the elementary school's gonna need to be replaced. I don't want to do that. You know, I don't want to go back five years from now and say, we need to replace this or we need to replace that. Because we didn't look at now. Maybe that's not in the plan now either, but knowing that we're not going to get any type of vote, knowing that the community's not dying for anything, I don't want necessarily say, and I'm limiting my abilities to, to make this facility, the school, the community better as a whole.
Any thoughts?
I have a question. Does it inhibit the district to move forward in any way to not give a dollar away?
No, it doesn't. Um, I, I, I mean, from the administrative perspective and coming up with, um, what would be some options for a plan? No, I mean, obviously, the more information we have, the better. Because if, obviously, if there's a dollar amount that everyone is compelled to, then we might as well just get that out on the table versus, um, not having it out on the table. Um, so no, there's nothing that says it absolutely has to have a dollar amount. Um, but, you know, at the end of the day, what Thomas is talking about is eventually we need to get there to, to be able to finalize something that would be put, um, in front of our community.
I guess what we, it's a little bit to, to talk about UNESCO. When, when we listened to them present, uh, they were interested in spending a lot, a couple months looking at our system and doing that analysis. I, I would hope that when they do that, they do it with a free and open mind, um, keeping in mind what, what we think. Um, and they also talk about engaging the public a lot. There were lots that they talked about, which, um, seems like it may be there. The one thing that happens is when we started this, we just last summer decided to go get a vote on a plan that we put together, okay? That evolved to where we're at. But we really don't have a true presentation as such. And I feel we're kind of scattered all over. So I think if, if we're not going to do it ourselves, we need to get somebody in to help us solidify that. Not that it's not gonna come up yet. If I'm reading this right, and as I look at it, and the work sessions, I think are gonna be important, is my guess is if we elect to have, or decide to have UNESCO, they're gonna start doing their analysis, and there will be, they'll come up in those work sessions to keep us in touch, kind of what their thoughts are. We're gonna have public engagement. And it may not take so long to come to a conclusion, um, when we definitely need to move forward. I won't put anybody else's thoughts, so there's, there's seven of us here.
So are these three different questions, like to move forward, that is separate than, than moving forward with UNESCO, so? Give me approval to move forward?
I think if we, the biggest way I would get is we can give Matt approval to move forward, um, with UNESCO or move forward with, with the facility project. Uh, we don't have that, but a mission to them right now, I think, just giving them the mission and do something so that, so we can get, continue to do our production, we can work with the, the, you know, the company and, and work with the community and figure it out.
Yeah, UNESCO is here, they said. And they say, give us the thumbs up and we'll be.
They'll be here.
Tomorrow, yeah, whatever, you know? But I'm, I'm with you. I don't want to throw a number out at this point. I'm also, um, I mean.
But we said, community members of all, community as a whole, remember, we're not saying yes to a bill. We're not saying yes to a vote. We're just interested in seeing.
We're not saying yes to a vote. We're saying.
We're just looking at our facilities and seeing what we're.
And giving outside advice as to where we're at.
Yeah, and community support, and then community advice and support on what they want. Yeah.
So I think with that, I'll make a motion to empower the administration to continue along with this process and continue talks with UNESCO to move this project forward, and this is absolutely necessary to continue with this.
So would you actually, um, amend your first motion?
I can.
Um, because we had a motion and a second on the table, correct?
I can accept a friendly amendment to my motion.
Yep, let's do that.
Okay.
Make the motion that UNESCO included with the administration moving forward.
Yep.
That's what you're talking about.
Correct.
Okay, and then we probably should have, uh, with that motion, maybe another second from, from Thomas?
Yeah, I'll pass that again.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the administration to move forward to engage with UNESCO. Okay, and, um, proceed. Um, thoughts of anybody else? Any more discussion?
I just want to add that I don't, I don't think it's fiscally responsible for us to set an example either for students to say, what do we need to tell us and we'll put that number out there? I mean, families have a budget, school districts have a budget. We need to be able to say, that would be great, but it's just not in our budget. I know it's kind of bumpy because if it works a little different, but if it works like what it is, I don't think it's that. Sometimes you don't know what your income is gonna be, so you kind of have to, um, do some guesswork and budgeting like that. But we certainly can't just say, I mean, I feel like sometimes we're out of, some of the house hunters, you're like, yeah, I'm gonna go to the basket cleaner and I'm already countertops. And then you see like a five million dollar mention, you're like, yes, that, that's exactly what I, you know? I mean, that'd be great, but.
I, I think just kind of, which I think you're asking, I'm saying is UNESCO is gonna help us, um.
Prioritize.
Yeah, move forward with community priorities, look at long, uh, long-term facility maintenance, look at our, our buildings, the whole, what's gonna work, what's not gonna work, and helping engage the community in what's, what's fiscally responsible for our school district and our community to pay for. And we combine all those efforts together, and I think we'll come up with the right plan.
And like, and like you mentioned, they had a long-term plan where, you know, you don't just say, okay, this is great for this one project. It's a long-term, this is what's next on the list. So this is where we're going. And we need just a little more direction and focus on, on that for facility.
Well, I think consulting with UNESCO, I think it's a pretty fiscally responsible thing to do. They're not advocating for major crazy changes. You know, you've got this long-term that's gonna help. You're not gonna go out in a crazy direction. I think they're a very responsible, very responsible company that's gonna give us this thing for a moment, I think, here. So I think that's, budget-wise, I think that's pretty responsible.
At the conference, I talked to two schools that were hooking people, and they had nothing other than positive to say about them. And it was all the same stuff. What I think we heard at the presentation is the real thing. And my security on some of the questions that have come up is they want to be engaging the public. And they said they want to be engaging the public before the resolution. Well, that's where it all comes to surface. We're gonna find some information out. And granted, if it proceeds forward, we will find out the true results at a vote. But they want to bring it up forward so there's a bigger discussion before we even get there. That was my impression.
And the best decision may be no decision. There might be a decision to do not, and that's something we discussed as well. But that's only going to be done by the time we interact with UNESCO, and UNESCO interacts with school and us interacting with the community. I, I think it's a good idea.
Cheryl, you have something on there?
Was, was I correct in remembering that, um, even though we engaged UNESCO, if we decided not to do a facility, they get paid nothing?
They get paid nothing, correct.
I just wanted to make that clear to the community.
Right.
Yeah.
Totally.
And I'm sorry.
As I say, I feel fully comfortable moving forward. I've been on, heard the facilities conversation. It's been, I don't know, two years or so. There has been a lot of, there has been a lot of conversations. We've asked the community if we wanted, it's time, or people are asking, are we moving forward? And, you know, kind of like, we said, it's, it's time. We need to move forward. We need to give the district permission to, to get some real bids on the table so we can look at, um, where we're at, invite the community in again. But this is not then a decision that's been made in the last month or two. I've been part of these conversations for a long time, along with most of us.
And to speak to what Cheryl said, to, um, to make, you know, transparent, um, it looks like we could save maybe an average of one or two percent overall by engaging them. But we're also saving superintendent time and effort and a lot of headache and, you know, so it's, it's not just saving, but it's saving individuals.
And we're hiring someone who's done this many times, so we will save a lot of time.
And this is what they specialize in is school districts.
Right, just school district, so.
So we are business meeting right now, and everybody's engaged in discussion. I think with this move to the work sessions, if we all decide to move forward, it will start to solidify. Um, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have more discussion of this.
Do any students, especially your, do you have to, from your perspective, what you're thinking? You don't have to.
We, we also have some previous discussions you weren't there on, so you're just gonna start here. So if you're uncomfortable, if they, so if you want to fill in your videos, we are getting.
Lots to talk about, um, we've talked the last fifteen minutes about this one topic. It's a big topic. And it's, um, yeah, it's very important for us to see, you know, what's our future to be for, for this project. And I do believe we need to do something about it. Um, I don't know when the perfect time is, you know, talk about what exactly we're planning out and everything. I don't know if this, if the board approves this, this is gonna be, you know, different than not moving in and out of the roundtable again. Or when we approve, when the board approves this, then we can make adjustments as we, as we go on, or?
Our intent is actually, um, if you don't mind, if I summarize a little bit. Our intent is to pick somebody that's gonna help us solidify and kind of, at the end of the day, work with the administration directly. Um, along with kind of looking at our, our needs and where we go with that. And I suspect that it will come back to almost every work session. We may have other discussions at business meetings of various things, but this will be a topic I would think we will be on every single work session for sure, all the way through, at least in the summer.
But I think it's a topic, we get some more students involved and, and what they have to say, as well as creating new members in high school.
I agree. There was a conversation of kind of, you know, it's supposed to be a topic, but.
It's okay.
Yes, I do think that something needs to like move forward because I know it's like the talking to some people, whatever, that like it was talked about and there is nothing. I think it needs to keep progressing or, or it's gonna kind of jump off and not be so much on. And you're just like, I think it needs to keep progressing, or, or it's going to kind of jump off and not be so much on the...
And I just want to piggyback on what maybe is saying, I, I don't, I want to make sure that the, we're, that we're clear here, Rick. And I want to make sure we're clear on this, that I'm not envisioning in any way that we are pumping the brakes. We are moving forward. We are going to continue the work that has already been done, that's been going on, on pushing thirty months now. And we are going to continue that work forward with the idea that we are going to get a deliverable to this body to either say yea or nay to. And that is the mission that the administration and UNESCO are going to be working on. Okay?
Can I please? Everybody kind of saying, Cheryl? Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Um, I'll go with a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Carrie, I will be on the phone tomorrow morning with UNESCO.
Then, um, if we can move then to the strategic plan, that's the next headline. And I thought that if you go to your, um, the agency's agenda, there's some other information.
There is, and if you're in Drive looking at the agenda, I did put the link on the, the agenda that's in Drive too. Um, again, this is just a, a discussion point tonight. Um, all I have done here is just laid this out. Uh, strategic plan will be part of our work session, uh, work and learn this first meeting in February. So that will be something that will, will be on there. Um, but this is kind of a tentative timeline that I'm looking at. Uh, the plan to this is, um, we need stakeholder input. So there needs to be student input, there needs to be staff input, and there needs to be community input. All three of those components need to be involved in this. Um, there's a variety of ways that we can go about accomplishing stakeholder input. I think if you look at this, um, March twenty-fifth is an interesting day, because that is a quarter break day. Um, so that is a day that I would advocate that we use that and capitalize on that, and potentially do some staff input sessions. Uh, the other thing that's on there was parent-teacher conferences coming up the first week of February. That's a potential time where we have a lot of parents in buildings and could potentially engage them with some, some information as well. Um, working backwards, I really see July sixteenth as when the board has to adopt the new strategic plan. So we will start the new fiscal year July one. And so my intention would be in July, at that July meeting, you would be adopting a strategic plan for two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one. Um, and then we just work backwards, that means we need a first reading by the June twenty-fifth meeting. That means I need a draft of the final strategic plan to the board for the June eleventh work session. So it just kind of works itself backwards. So the real question that I want the board to consider, we don't need an answer tonight. We will talk more about this as we have our work and learn on February twelfth. But, um, what is the board's preference with facilitating the stakeholder sessions? Um, in the past, the district has worked with Bruce Miles. I did, uh, reach out to Bruce just to let him know that this is coming up, and I knew he had history in the district. And so I did reach out to him. He is certainly open, willing, and able to, uh, to do something. Um, but please start thinking about what, what your preference would be to, um, to, if you want an outside facilitator, uh, obviously that has a cost. Um, I would say conservatively, if we're going to go and have someone to assist us to teach your planning process, you will at a minimum have five thousand dollars into it, and you could spend as much as thirty to fifty thousand dollars if you wanted to. Um, so think about that.
Do all the schools hire somebody?
You know, I, I can only speak limited experience, but, um, in the past, uh, my past, we, we did hire somebody the first time around, and then the two following plans, I actually facilitated those. Um, and so, uh, the one conversation that when I did call Bruce, I traded emails with him, but I'm sorry, when I traded emails with him, he did say, um, you don't have to work with Bainville. Um, you've worked with me multiple times. Um, I have the confidence that you could facilitate those. I'd be happy to do some one-on-one training with you, to talk with you about it. Um, or I'd be willing to do, get a, if you guys have a, a strategic planning group that wants to facilitate them, he could do a, a training session with a small group and do something like that. So there's lots of ways we can do it. It's not something we have to decide tonight, but I just want the board to start thinking about it. Um, because that is something that we are going to need to engage somebody, if, if you want an outside person to come in and do that.
I personally would like to see it internal. And the only reason I'm going to say that is it seemed like when we did it, with the external, we had kind of a strategic plan with some stuff that was relatively specific. By the time we got done, the English language came into it in such a fashion that it was a conversation, and the specifics kind of left the door. And I don't know if it was somebody else, but gosh, when we were put together, and there were a lot of very specific things, it all got watered down by the time we got it done. And we don't want something to sit on the shelf. Um, you know, why do they have to have on the shelves, it's going to be watering or something to keep alive? It has got to be a live document. And our whole goal when we were working on it last time was to have a strategic plan that drove all the goals for the superintendent. So it was very clear what our directions were going, and it was okay. But I just always felt was low on the marginal side. So personally, I'm internal.
And I think you got David Mars on, you spoke eloquently about it. How, how, how?
Yeah.
And I can tell you that that needs to be the foundation of our strategic funding. It is, we need to keep, if you're leaned down, then how? How are we going to do this? How are we going to do it? And we need to ask some questions.
Yeah, it started all kinds of specifics. So, um, there were suggestions here and there. And then it just started, the water just kind of came in and kind of filtered into this. The great day of, of, related to a mission statement. Some people have, companies sometimes have mission statements, and they are absolutely worthless mission statements, because they talk about everything all over the sky, all condensed together, and it looks really nice. I was really more interested in something specific that we could actually help the superintendent drive what our needs were. And I, I just didn't feel right. And I was only one of the school members when we did that. But I just didn't have a feel right now. Cheryl, you go, or go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask you, Matt, do you have a preference on internal or?
No, I, I would be, I would be very comfortable doing it. I think we have a lot of great people that can do this. I, I don't, I am not in any way fix that we need to have somebody, um, coming from the outside and, and do this. Um, of course, if the board would prefer to have an outside consultant come in and do it, you're, you're not stepping on my toes, that's, that's just fine. There's a lot of districts that do that, and, and there are options. You know, I mentioned Bruce Miles, he's worked with the district, but MSBA has a process. There's, there's a whole host of, of options that, that I can certainly get lined up. But I would have no problem facilitating a process and incorporating some other people at Bainville Schools as well.
And I can tell Sam, when it's Bruce, it was, the revenge was very generic when it finished. And, and I think it was put that way so that there was some wiggle room. And I don't know if that's what we want, or is community, but if that's what the board decides they want, that's, that's fine. But I don't mean that's where we were headed, that we were green enough, we really didn't know how to fix it.
It's not the, like, if you look at our current strategic plan, when I first looked at it, um, it's not very specific. It didn't have very, it didn't have smart walls. And so it was hard to like explore options, write sufficient resources. So what do we know if we're actually doing what we set out to do, what, uh, did we, what is sufficient? And so that's where I saw some, some areas of opportunity that we can be really specific, so that if there's obviously goals around student support, student achievement, that we can ensure like, those things are happening for our students. And that there's a vulnerability. So if you don't have metrics, there's no vulnerability. So, so what if we didn't make it or not? And so I think it'd be fun, sort of strategic plans. But where you have clarity, because then you know you go back to this plan, and the decisions you're making, this is what we've decided, this is what we've agreed on, this is the direction we're going. It's like that guideline. Um, and you use it, you know, our strategic plan, we're proud to look at it all the time. It's a reference point, and enables you to say yes or no to certain things. Here's where, um, where our focus is, but I would love to see specific metrics attached. And it doesn't mean how.
Well, yeah, my consensus is that I don't have a problem with outside consultants, but I think there are times for them, and we've already made a motion to go ahead with one. But if we can do it in-house, I think it's always more valuable. And I think it speaks to the community in another way.
Yeah.
And I think we have the expertise to do it. That was the reason why we need to spend money outside in this particular area.
Okay, this is not an action item, so all of this is a discussion tonight. We will continue to discuss tonight about the actual process as we go to work and learn on paperwork. Uh, so there isn't an action that needs to happen, I just wanted to get this timeline in front of you. If you have any questions or anything on it, I could try to help, um, but then we'll also guide you to what more information we need on paperwork.
So, you have a lot for what?
I, I got that, I got that idea.
Okay, um, uh, move to the next one. Um, H, which was scheduled upcoming meeting, as I said, policy committee, uh, something scheduled March eighteenth.
So, so, yeah, there's just two, I just want to get that in the public record. March eighteenth, uh, six P M. will be at the district office, my office, for our policy committee. And then April fifteenth, at six P M. Um, and then just a reminder, certified teacher negotiations is to, no, Thursday, the twenty-fourth, at three thirty P M. Um, did I send a location for that? Okay, I will confirm a location and send that out to people that are, are attending that, but that'll be three thirty on Thursday, the twenty-fourth. That's what I can throw a couple of...
Does the W C D need to be under that?
Uh, no, it doesn't. Okay? Okay, just a question, two of us board members were talking about this. Why do you think the boardroom is going to be done? Yep, so that's a, that's a good question. Um, we have, uh, so, so the grand plan with the boardroom was to actually have students build our board table. Uh, we have a little hiccup with our shop lot, and having a U L, um, certified, uh, component in it, uh, we actually can't get, get, um, wired electrically until we get the U L, the one they sent us, when the U L approved. So we were supposed to have in the month of January, the U L-approved piece of equipment, so we can get it wired and taken care of. Um, I would think as soon as that, we get that going, realistically, um, you're probably hoping that, I'm hoping, the end of third quarter, we need to get a board core. That's not hoping, but please don't hope it. I'll update you as we go.
Okay, okay. This is, I'd like to take another moment, welcome you to.
Thank you.
And appreciate that. Um, I don't know exactly what you've been told, but I'm sure the superintendent's open with any questions you have. If you have questions over the rest of the board, I'm sure everybody would answer a question if you missed something or what. So feel part of this. I'm not going to accept.
Right, I'm both excited to be part of this, and thank you for allowing us to be on board. If you're in here.
Yeah, thank you.
If there is no business before the move, uh, before the board, I'm looking forward to go out here.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
No second.
I may have a sec. Motion from the, I have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Yes. Turn it on.